Welcome to the 2017 Action Plan for Huddershead Funds Public Hearing. This is the second public hearing we've had here in 2017 here at the Western Library. Thank you for coming tonight. We'll talk a little bit about why we're meeting and then we'll get into some more specifics about strategically what we are trying to implement across the community in the upcoming year. Again, as you can see, this is an opportunity to provide community input to our draft program year action plan. And we had, the first meeting that we had gave kind of a broad and generalized outline of what the plan would entail. Tonight, we are presenting an actual budget. It's not specifically a budget, but we'll be kind of breaking down the investment dollars with a few caveats for the upcoming year. So it's an amount of detail that we did not include in our previous meeting. So we'll be talking about the HUD entitlement grant funds. HUD is the Housing and Urban Development Department of the United States Government. We get CDVG, home, emergency solutions grants, and housing opportunities for persons with AIDS or HOPA grants. And we'll talk a little bit more specifically about each of those designations in just a bit. So comments can be made tonight following the presentation, or they can be made via mail or email through May the 12th, and we'll provide some contact information in just a second for that. Pardon me. It's important to know that as of yet, we have not received the allocation for the program year that we're going to be discussing. So frankly, we are just assuming that the funding that we received in the last program year is going to be pretty much static or commiserate this year. So the numbers that we'll be talking about will be based on that assumption. So based on that assumption, we assume that the funding will be somewhere in the neighborhood And the final version of this action plan will be due to HUD 45 days after they make the official funding announcement and tell all of the participating jurisdictions across the country what their actual funding amounts will be. Additionally, all of the budgets for Metro Louisville must be approved by Metro Council as well. So in fact, the mayor will be presenting a budgetary address to the Metro Council this week on April 27th. And that budget will be approved at the end of this fiscal year for the upcoming fiscal We've invited a guest tonight from the Louisville Metro Housing Authority. And we've invited this guest to come and talk a little bit about the commitment, first of all, about the upcoming Choice Neighborhoods grant and five to 10-year plan for the Russell Neighborhood, and also about the commitment that Louisville Metro has made in the form of CDVG dollars to this very exciting project. It's a significant investment and will have implications on additional programmatic activities over the course of the next five years. Pardon me. So I'd like to invite Sarah Galway, who is here with us again from the Louisville Metro Housing Authority, to speak about Choice Neighborhoods and the grant and revitalization efforts for the future terrace housing development. And Sarah is the Moving to Work Program Coordinator. So do you want to, you want to come up and stand next to me or pull up a chair? Or you can have this chair and I'll go out there. How do you want to do it, Sarah?
Whatever you want.
Super informed.
Super, super?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
I'm going to get this bag out of your way too. All right. I should have put that up here before you came. Apologies.
In early 2015, the Louisville Metro Housing Authority was awarded a $425,000 grant from HUD to develop a revitalization plan for the Russell Neighborhood and for the future terrace housing complex. We spent two years working with more than 600 neighborhood stakeholders to put together a comprehensive plan for the neighborhood. That was finalized and submitted to HUD in January 2017. Then in June 2016, we found out we were awarded a second Choice Neighborhoods grant, a $1 million action grant to do some initial highly visible activities to jumpstart the revitalization of the Russell Neighborhood. We're using those funds to make improvements at Shepherd Park, particularly Spry Ground for children, and a new playground, to redevelop several vacant lots in the neighborhood that are owned by the city, to create gateways into your neighborhood, and to see large-scale murals on several of the railroad overpasses that are located between 13th and 15th Streets, and to make what we're calling smart bus stops, which are artistic and digitally enhanced bus stops within the neighborhood. We were lucky enough in December 2016 to be notified by HUD that we had received a $29,575,000 Choice Neighborhoods implementation grant. This grant will essentially give us the seed money to completely revitalize the future terrace housing development, which currently contains 758 units. Following revitalization, the new site will contain approximately 640 mixed-income units, including 20 affordable homeownership, or 20 homeownership units. The CDVG money is absolutely critical to this project in that it will pay for the public infrastructure needed at the new site. So new roadways, new water lines, everything that essentially goes underneath the site.
Okay. And just to summarize again, the investment at Metro, the commitment that Louisville Metro has made to this effort, a total of $15 million of community development block grants have been committed to the project over the course of five or six years. And for the upcoming year, that initial investment will equal $2.5 million, which will be used for infrastructure developments for early phases.
Especially critical for the first phase of development, which is a 120-unit senior building located on what's currently Old Wilton Park.
Okay. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it, Sarah. And if we have any questions, I don't know, we can address those. So again, we covered in broad strokes, we covered very similar material in the first meeting that we had about a month and a half or so ago. But I did, and so if you were, if you were here for that presentation, a lot of this stuff will look fairly familiar, but it's important information to cover once again. So the action plan covers our CDVG dollars, as we talked about, community development block grants. Those are funds that are used to provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities for low and moderate income persons and households. Home or home investment partnerships are funds that are used for acquiring, developing, and/or rehabilitating affordable housing, or for providing direct rental assistance. ESG or emergency solutions grants are funds that are used to reach out to those living on the street to support emergency shelters, rapid rehouse homeless individuals and families, and to prevent homelessness. And then HOPA or housing opportunities for persons with AIDS are funds that are used to provide housing assistance and related supportive services to low-income persons living with HIV/AIDS and their families. Again, we mentioned previously in the beginning, but it's important to note that the funding levels that we'll be talking about will be in the neighborhood of $14.2, $14.3 million These funds are allocated by formula. HUD uses a formula to determine the amount of funding that each city or participating jurisdiction gets based on population and other factors. And in order to receive that grant, there are three important things that each recipient has to do. You have to present a five-year consolidated plan. We most recently submitted our consolidated plan in 2015, which stood for five years. And that five-year plan outlines goals, objectives, and actual numbers that the city agrees to achieve over the course of five years. So that's kind of a broader, longer-range strategic plan for community investment over the course of five years. And then each year, you have to submit an annual action plan, which is what we're here talking about tonight. And then, so that's kind of at the beginning. You submit the action plan to delineate, in theory, what is one-fifth of the consolidated plan. And then at the end of that year, you submit a caper or a report that denotes the outcomes and reports on what you were able to achieve, and hopefully that matches up with what you said you were going to achieve. You can download any of those documents on our website. That's a really long website address, but if you go to LouisvilleKY.gov backslash government, housing, community development, we've got a public notices and federal plans and project appliance section that has all of those documents available. This is a, I feel, or I find this to be a pretty useful infographic here to kind of talk a little bit about the flow that I just laid out and about what metro government sends to HUD and what HUD then sends back to us. So again, the consolidated plan gets sent to them, they approve it, they tell us what our allocation's going to be, we send it in, the action plan back to them, they approve the funding, and then we give them a report to denote what we were able to achieve. Funding priorities. So obviously, we try to match up the objectives for the larger strategic plan for the city. And with the consolidated plan goals and obviously action plan activities as well. So we want to deliver excellent city services, ensure fiscal integrity, support job creation, and most importantly, invest in our people and in neighborhoods. And goal number 12 of the mayor's strategic plan is around increasing and preserving affordable housing choices throughout Louisville Metro. Obviously, we also want to positively impact goal 15, which is to increase inclusion and create equity, and goal 16, which is to decrease abandoned structures. And we'll talk a little bit more specifically in a bit about the actions that we invest in that address those particular issues. In the consolidated plan, we identified five major goals for our investments: affordable housing, community development, homeless services, small business development, and non-homeless special needs. And just to do a quick recap, and I won't spend a whole bunch of time on this, but from program year 2015, which was July 1, 2015 to June 30, 2016, these are some of the outcomes, and I'm not going to read each one of these. You can see them on the screen. I'll hit a couple of highlights. But data from the current program year will be available approximately in September, pardon me, of this year. So 32 households received down payment assistance. That was across 13 different ZIP codes. So down payment assistance is available for families, for income-eligible families in any area of the city that's not geographic specific. And we get a good spread of that. We've got, I want to talk a little bit also about, we had our CHODO activity, and pardon me, 240 households were provided with home repairs and rehabs through emergency repair, weather station, et cetera. We brought some, are the brochures up?
Yeah, back in the center.
We have some brochures up front that detail, I'll bring you a couple, that detailed the home repairs and rehab programs that we offer through our office as well. And we, more than 2,800 persons received homeownership education and counseling services. And then there were several rental construction or rehab projects that were invested in and that are underway right now. And those include Nightingale, Louisville Historic Rising, Jacob School, Waterson Lakeview, and Riverport Landing. We're going to continue on with a couple more slides of highlights. I'm not going to, again, take off each one. You can see the summation posted up here on the slide. But I did want to hit on a couple of hot points, or just a little more specificity, because these are just kind of general numbers. The community centers or in parks that we have listed up here, I think we have five parks, those are Riverside Gardens, Windup Park, Shelby Park, Houston Quinn Park, and the West Louisville Outdoor Learning Center. And those improvements can go anywhere from benches and a walking path to a splash park, to a bathroom, or to a set of bathrooms. You know, a lot of these parks don't have bathrooms at all. So in eligible census tracts, those are the sort of investments that we can make at our community parks. Some renovations at some nonprofit and community facility-type buildings, including Portland Museum, Louisville Central Community Center, and the Urban League. And then we've got technical assistance that is available for economic development activities, so business-related TA. Nearly 30 businesses received micro enterprise loans. You know, those loans typically range anywhere from $2,500 to $15,000. And those are spread across 14 totals of codes as well, so we get a good geographic dispersment for that activity as well. And finally, the last slide that we have that is giving a little bit more detail about our activities for program year 2015 include nearly 50 homes that received tenant-based rental assistance, more than 10,000 homeless persons received supportive services, a dozen nonprofits served more than 6,000 clients that utilized emergency ESG assistance for street outreach, prevention, et cetera. And then the Family Economic Success Program provided more than 1,700 folks with economic empowerment skills to move towards self-sufficiency. And then in our special needs and HOPA goals, we had tenant-based rental assistance for more than 30 households through our housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, where 160 households got STR and U. What does that mean?
Short-term rent mortgage and utility assistance.
Gosh, thank you so much, Curtis. We have so many, it's like alphabet soup. We have so many acronyms, I get confused sometimes. And then over 1,600 folks received supportive services through our HOPA activity as well. And the last number, 75 households received grant construction or barrier removal services are great for persons with disabilities and for aging seniors. The ability to remain in the home that they live in by allowing, by installing ramps so they can get access to their home, or by addressing some barriers within the home, such as stairs or handrails, you know, allows folks to age in place, very important across our community. As you look at the next slide, we talked a little bit earlier about the goals that we have, and we denoted five, but we break down kind of our spending to include our admin and planning. And it's important to note that, now I have a little bit of problem with these colors, so forgive me, but obviously, we spend the majority of our funds on housing, followed by community development, homeless services, and then special needs services and small business development by percentage, and of course, our admin and planning allocation as well. So we spoke a little bit earlier about the commitment that we've made to Choice Neighborhoods. And one of the ways that we complement and try to undergird and support those efforts is by targeting additional resources in the Russell Neighborhood in what's called a Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area. And that denomination is a five, or designation, is a five-year designation. And the most recently approved, submitted and approved designation was for the Russell Neighborhood mid-2016. And so what it allows is just a little bit of flexibility of the application of CDVG funding in that particular neighborhood, and again, is complimenting the Choice Neighborhoods efforts. Think on the next slide, we've got, we proposed to invest about a million dollars in Russell. And again, all of these, and again, these numbers are preliminary numbers, and these are budget numbers, but these are all contingent upon Metro Council approving our budget as well as us receiving our allocation from HUD. And these are our best estimation of what those commitments are going to look like. And I'm sorry, if you could just, if you could just go back to, thanks so much, Curtis. I appreciate that. So just to get an idea of what sort of activities will be funded through this investment, we'll have, we'll have home repair assistance, assistance available to folks that own homes in this neighborhood, but we'll also have incentives to attract new homeownership in this neighborhood, to attract businesses in this neighborhood, to help Russell residents start small businesses, and to address vacant and abandoned properties as well. And we'll take a systemized approach across these sectors, because again, this designation lasts for five years, our commitment to Russell lasts for five years. So we won't be able to bite off all of this work in one year. We'll take a measured and systematic approach across the neighborhood in subsequent years. Thank you, Curtis. So the next important chunk of investment to talk about are the affordable housing activities, which represent north of $5.5 million of work and make in large part that housing piece of pie on the pie chart that we shared earlier. We'll have efforts to promote sustained homeownership, so that'll be certainly including the repair and rehab efforts and programs that we have. We'll construct and rehab affordable units, homeownership counseling, and then again, the specific Russell NRSA activities that we talked about as well. Community development activities, again, we, this will be just shy of $3 million, and we talked about the big chunk of that is going to be for supporting the infrastructure improvements in Russell. So the vast majority of those dollars will go to that effort. Next slide, please. Now, and I failed to mention earlier, but the homeless services activities are administered through Assistor Agency Community Services, which are part of Louisville Metro Government. Historically, community services and housing were actually in the same department a couple years ago. As Louisville Forward was formed, there was a split between community services and the Office of Housing and Community Development. So we are the arbiters of this plan and of this application to HUD, but our partner agency supervises these activities, and we work closely with them to work on these initiatives, which include rapid rehousing, rental assistance, and we kind of talked about this earlier, homeless prevention services, street outreach, and then shelter operations and case management. So we partner with about a dozen agencies to get that work done as well. And the proposed funding for that's right at $2.25 million. Excuse me. Our small business development activities are just north of $0.5 million, and this, again, will assist businesses through micro, we call it micro biz, technical assistance, loans, and then loans for businesses in West Louisville, particularly where you're marking $300,000 for Russell NRSA activities for that specific work. The $200,000 there will be through Metco. We'll be focusing on bringing businesses to the neighborhood that meet public demand, such as restaurants, fitness centers, and entertainment facilities. Again, it's important to note that when we are making these investments, particularly in NRSA, we're referring to the Vision Russell document. We are trying to provide some actual funding dollars that align with initiatives that have been identified in that document rather than just recreate the will as it were. Pardon me. And then finally, our non-homeless special needs activities are proposed just shy of $3.25 million. Again, this is, will include the ramp and barrier removal initiative for persons with disabilities. This will also provide assistance for persons with HIV and AIDS and their families, the HOPA activity in the form of TPRA, short-term rent mortgage, utility assistance, and supportive services. Excuse me. So I know that that's kind of a lot of information, but just as a recap from a timeline perspective, as I mentioned, we had our first public hearing at the end of February. We released a draft of this plan earlier this month, and we're in the midst of a 30-day public comment period, having the second public hearing tonight, and then the public comment period will end on May 12th. Typically, we submit our action plan in May after we receive our allocation from HUD. That may be delayed this year. It may be June, July, or August. We have 45 days after they actually give us our allocation, but we can't do it until that's received. Pardon me. Again, all of these plans are available on our website, and we also have hard copies at our offices. So our offices are at the Metro, the Ballotman Center, which is located at 444 South Fifth Street on the fifth floor. We have a hard copy available up there in the lobby. We have a hard copy at the Community Services Offices, which is located at the Edison Center, 701 West Ormsby on the second floor there. Take the elevator up to the second floor. And then we also have hard copies available, are they at all of the library branches?
Yes.
So tonight, we're here at the Western Library. How many total branches?
18.
18, fantastic. And also, they're available at Neighborhood Place Sites. Let's see here. Again, this is the contact information that we talked about earlier, so you can provide written comment to our division, attention of Curtis Stauffer, who is the Assistant Director for the Office of Housing and Community Development and is joining me here tonight. I hope that I introduced myself. If I didn't, my name's Gabe, and I'm the Director of the Office of Housing and Community Development. You met Sarah Galway from the Housing Authority earlier, and again, Curtis is with us tonight. He's our Assistant Director. You can send written comments to him. You can send... You can send written comments to him, you can send comments via email to him, curtis.stauffer@leuvilleky.gov. And then finally, you can also make comment tonight here. So, any attendees who signed up on the speaker list will be invited to make their comments. And if anyone wishes to speak but didn't sign up, please go sign up now. And now, if anybody did sign up to speak, I would welcome them to participate at this point. Everybody sign up, okay?
Kevin, Randy, comments?
Invite any questions?
Well, I do have a question, and I will be sending Rick's comments.
Excellent.
So my question is, so you typically don't send in the action plan until you get notification of the allocation.
Right.
And it's probably going to be delayed, so it's probably not going to happen timely like you normally do. So in the event that you get notification of the allocation and it's less, much less than you anticipated, will you go back and redo your action plan?
We'll have to redo the budget numbers. You know, strategically, what we're focusing on won't really change, but what we'll have to do is to adjust accordingly, which is frankly what has to happen every year anyway. We may be doing that after the mayor presents the budget to Metro Council. There may be some shifting there, but yeah, absolutely, we would have to do, we wouldn't necessarily redo the plan, you know, I think we would have a very similar focus, but we would absolutely have to take a look at the budget.
So will there be a lot of opportunity for public input during that adjustment change?
I do.
Per HUD's notice that allowed an exemption from their current action plan timelines this year, given the issues with Congress's failure to pass a budget in timely fashion for the current year, they are not mandating additional public comment periods. What they did mandate, which you'll see, or the page number in the draft plans, it talks about contingencies for changes in funding, and basically, for the most part, should funding be reduced, there'll be certain costs that are relatively fixed. We're hoping to avoid layoffs at Metro Government, so some of those admin and planning costs will remain pretty well fixed, but the rest of those funding amounts will be adjusted proportionally, generally speaking. But there are certain percentage allocations, such as you're familiar with, such as a 15% CHODO set aside with home funding. Should that be reduced, CHODO funding would be reduced proportionally as well.
And we're not, we're open to potentially having additional public meetings and comment, you know, I don't think, we're not married to just what the federal government and HUD mandates. If timing allows, you know what I mean, we will absolutely do our best to reach out in a public fashion, if any drastic or material changes occur as a result. Thank you for that question.
How much local tax credit money is involved in this? Which means why? Talking about other money?
That is, the purpose of this plan is to discuss the funding allocations from HUD and planned uses for those funds. It doesn't talk about local managing requirements.
Yeah, this has, this entire plan and this entire presentation is only focused on the HUD funds.
If you look at the plan, you'll see there's some auxiliary alternative funding sources identified that work on similar activities, but the uses of those funds are not specified.
I'll think in that case that the mayor's budget presentation would have limited impact on how you go forward.
What the mayor's budget does do, and what Metro Council is required to do, is discuss the spending decisions for these funds, as well as other funds, so it's included in, these funds, although they're estimated, are included in the mayor's budget going forward with upcoming fiscal year. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Well, we certainly appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Again, just because we're finishing up this presentation tonight does not end your ability to take a look at this, to provide comments and feedback, so we welcome that via email or via real mail and writing. And please feel free to contact Curtis or I if you have any additional questions. We'll both be leaving our business cards up front as well.
And if those of you who were attend, I hope all of you signed in, but if you didn't, it's important you sign in till we have a public record at this meeting. Thank you.
Thanks so much, everybody, for coming out on a beautiful evening. We really appreciate it.